The city of Dunellen would like to welcome everyone to our November 8th General City Council meeting. It is presently 5:35. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Would you all please remain stand, standing? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to give us a short prayer and lead us in the right direction? Tom, thank you very much.
We don't pay very well.
That's okay. That's okay. It's an honor and a privilege to be able to come here and pray with you all. It certainly is. I appreciate the freedoms we have. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for your goodness, your grace, and your mercy. Father, I pray your blessing over this meeting this evening, Lord. I pray that you bless this council, Lord, with knowledge, wisdom, and discernment, and follow up for all of us who are gathered here together, Lord, along with this council. Lead and guide us in our lives on how we can bless this city as well. And finally, brothers and sisters, whatever is true, whatever is noble, whatever is right, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, whatever is admirable, anything that's excellent or praiseworthy, think about such things, put it into practice, and may the God of peace be with you all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please be seated. All right, Ms. Odom, roll call, please.
Mayor White.
Present.
Vice Mayor Henshaw.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Kenny.
Here.
Councilwoman Cabbage.
Present.
Troy Slattery, Public Works.
Jan Smith, riots officer.
Here.
Georgina Stig, Community Development.
Here.
Julie Danowski, Clerk's Office.
Here.
Chief McQuaid.
Here.
Lieutenant Yawkes. Attorney Hand.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on Thursday, November 4th, 2021.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Odom. Just to go over a few items for those that just came into the room. If you would like to speak, you will have several opportunities this evening to speak. You can speak at the beginning of the meeting on our consent agenda, also speak on any of the items that are coming up. If you'd like to speak, we ask that you sign up back in the podium in the lobby. You sign up, you get to speak first. Anyone who hasn't signed up will still be allowed to speak if you decide at a later time, at that time to speak. If you have a phone or some other ringing device on you right now, this is a good time to turn it off so it doesn't disrupt the meeting. If you decide to speak, you'll get your three minutes. Please walk up to the podium. We need your name and address. We also ask you to speak directly into the microphone with good clarity because you are being recorded, and there are people that are listening on Zoom, and they do pay attention to this. So with that said, council, do we have any comments regarding the agenda? Ms. Odom, that includes the consent agenda also, correct? Any comments on the agenda? I have one comment. I would like on the consent agenda, item number two, removed from the consent agenda and rescheduled back for the general discussion. Anything else on that from council? All right. Let me just go over this. I know some people are very familiar with how this works. Some may not. The consent agenda, what that means is council through its workshop five days ago has already discussed these things thoroughly and is ready to make a vote on it. We don't plan to re-discuss it again. So the consent agenda this evening includes items one through nine. Except for number two, which has been removed, which we'll bring it for discussion right now, later. So is there any comment right now from the audience? Anybody signed up? If there's anything that you would like to speak about that is not on this agenda, something new, something different, something strange, something unexpected, this is the time to do it. So is there anybody that would like to speak on something? Yes?
Mayor, I have a couple of people signed up.
Okay, we've got to go by who signed up first.
Bill Viver.
Bill Viver.
Bill Viver, 9552 Southwest 192nd Court Road, Dunellen. I'm going to do something I don't normally do, but I hope I can do it in three minutes. I want to tell you a little story, and it has to do with commercial use. Across America, more careers in park services and park organizations have been lost over the issue of commercial use than any other single thing. People that I know, state park directors, people that I work with over commercial use. I came close myself a few times dealing with commercial use in parks. So it's always a contentious issue everywhere. And the people who are recommending uses in public lands to use it for a private purpose for commercial use, they always have attorneys. That's predictable. So what we're seeing here is no different than any other location. And they always involve the political arena. They often, they go right to the top of the political arena. They go to the governor, which I've been involved in myself a few times, backed on my side. It helped me. But a little story I just want to tell you about my experience at Liberty State Park. I was a young superintendent. I was assigned to Liberty State Park. It was an urban park. It's a mile and a half of river foundation within a stone's throw with the Statue of Liberty in Ellis Island. And I got up there. It was an urban wasteland with railroads and coal dumping operations and the largest railroad terminal in the United States, largest rail yard in the United States was there. It was all a big mess. The railroad had moved out, and they sent me up there to be in charge. And I said, oh my God, what am I going to do with this? So very soon, the park got cleared. Millions of dollars were spent creating the park, which is now one of America's, and I think maybe America's most unique urban park, because it includes a whole bunch of different aspects of American history. We call it the trilogy of American history, railroad history, history of transportation, and the history of immigration. But what happened after the park got developed is we didn't have a management plan. This is what I'm going to talk to you about. There was no management plan. And so what happened was almost every commercial use that you can possibly imagine, these are huge commercial operations, ferry services, you've probably heard of this, the ferry that operates to the Statue of Liberty. That operates at a Liberty State Park today. Circle Island Ferry is called. Some of you have probably been on it. Then we had a restaurant built under a tent. And all of a sudden, the tent comes down, and we have a restaurant in operation, a huge restaurant, three times the size of this building. We had a marina that got started. We had a golf course that got proposed, and that was canceled by Governor Whitman, who was on my side at that particular time, because the people of the city of Jersey City decided they didn't want to have a golf course there, which has now come back again in another way. And I'll talk you about that in a second if I have a minute. Commercial use after commercial use after commercial use came to Liberty Park. At one point, they wanted to take over the whole park and turn it into a hotel complex and the boutiques and so on. So what is the remedy for this? What defense does the public have when they want to preserve their public open space that was paid for and managed by public funds? It's management plan, it's regulations, it's ordinances, it's laws. In the case of Liberty State Park, I'm down to six seconds. The solution was, which was a suggestion I had made, legislation by the legislature, which is in the legislature right now. And there's a big fight going on with Paul Feinman, who is the--
Bill, two more minutes.
I won't even take minutes. With the billionaire Paul Feinman to take over part of Liberty State Park, in addition to his Liberty National, is it Liberty Presidential, Liberty National Golf Course. So what I'm saying is you're faced with the same situation today. You have exactly the same scenario where you have attorneys are involved, you have a group that wants to take over part of a public property that was purchased with public funds. And your role, and the role of the citizens out here, is to prevent that from happening and to make sure that park is managed for the public. And that was the case of Blue Run Park. It's managed for the preservation of the natural communities of Blue Run Park and also for passive use for the public. That's what it's for. It's not for commercial use. So as you go through this debate, and I think we're moving on pretty well with it now, we want to guard against having a commercial use take over public property. $4 million was spent at Blue Run Park, mostly by Marion County, but by the citizens of the state of Florida, so that they could have a natural park so they could enjoy nature. We all need beauty, John, you ever said, places to play in and pray in. And that's what Blue Run Park is. And neither of you know that better than anybody here probably, because you enjoy the park and you go out there with your friends and you have conversation, and it brings people together. We don't want to turn it into a commercial operation. Thank you.
You okay?
The story of Liberty Park is not over yet. The fight is still going on.
Thank you, Mr. Viver.
Beatrice Tripp.
Name and address, please.
Okay, I'm Beatrice Isata Tripp. I am a resident of Blue Cove at 20162 Blue Run Drive, Dunellen. I have many concerns about the maintenance of my neighborhood. We, the residents of Blue Cove, need the city of Dunellen to help us bring back the beauty of our neighborhood to be what it once was. Some of my concerns are the retention area that the city owns on the east side of the lake. That, one time in 2004, after the rains that we had, the storms that came through, they went ahead and put some kind of pumps on it. They drained a lot of, they dredged a lot of channels to try to take the water to the river, but that was left by itself. Things need to be maintained. Nothing is being done. If anybody goes out there and looks at what the city owns for, you know, for our retention area, nothing being done, not dredged, not cleaned. So right now, the water just builds up. So the water is not running. It's just sitting there. I'm also, I know this, that's my concerns, and I'm sure some of my neighbors agree with me. The roads in the neighborhood are an embarrassment, not just for us, the citizens of the neighborhood, but for the city. I have neighbors that come to visit me, and they said, wow, your roads are bad. And what do I tell them? Also, there are so many homes that are being sold, and they're being turned into Airbnb's. What kind of restrictions do we have? Now you don't even know who your neighbors is anymore, because you have all kinds of strangers coming in on the weekend. Also, there's so many, one time that we're not allowed to park anything in our neighborhoods. Now you see, commercial trucks and big RVs and all kinds of stuff. So my question is, if you were the neighbor, if you were having a house, and you know you have, you value your house, and you have people driving into your neighborhood, and you see all these commercial vehicles and huge RVs and things not being well taken care of, the roads are full of pitfalls. So those are my concerns. And I just, as a resident of Blue Cove, I'm asking for the city for help. We need some help. Just tell us what we need to do so we can do it. We're not asking you to do all the work. Just tell us, what do we need to do as the residents of Blue Cove? So thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Possibly, Troy, when we get later into the meeting, with staff reports, you might comment on a few of those things where appropriate. Okay. Thank you very much. That was some very provocative information. Is there anyone else?
David Coger.
My name is David Coger. I live at 11983 Palmetto Way here in Dunellen, which is right across the street from the Blue Run Park. And I've been up here before many times to discuss either a fence or something to keep people from accessing the river from the southwest corner of that bridge. That is designated by the permit that was issued from Swiftwood as a bio-retention area. That is not intended for foot traffic. If you read the permit, it is intended to filter the water that enters the river. Now, we all know that the river is the most precious thing we have in this community, and right now that is being destroyed by the fact that foot traffic is being allowed to access the river so much that when water, like the last couple of days, we've had some rains that overflowed the weir, and water running underneath the skimmer, and when it gets down to what's supposed to be a grassed area, well, there's unfortunately, there is now channels of mud path to the river, and all that silt that's coming through there unfiltered is now winding up underneath my body, or end going down river. There are several solutions. I understand that the fence has kind of been killed by the county, because for a fence to be put up, we have to tie into the existing fence that's on the bridge. The city cannot tie into the county's fence on the bridge, because that's their bridge. I am going to continue to pursue that with the county, see if I can get them to get their fence extended off the bridge so the city can tie into it. There's another fairly simple solution. If we just put up some signs that could be enforced, no swimming, no river access from through the retention area, and if the police department wouldn't enforce that, then we could stop the foot traffic that is using that. Now, when the new proposal for letting swimming take place at the Blue Run Park from six to sunset or six to dusk is fine, but during the daytime hours, when the police start enforcing the no swimming, at the get in, get out for tubers and kayakers, you know where they're going to want to come unless somebody does something to stop them. Because for the last two summers, that area over there has become the local swimming hole. What used to be full of nice eel brass and a fair amount of hydrola is now all sand from the bridge all the way to our property. And that is not healthy for the river. I would like to see the city council, see what they can't do to get some signs put up. I understand the fence is probably at least a year away. It took us a year to get them to stop the jumpers off the bridge, but at least they did that. So we're probably a year away from getting them to extend the fence off the bridge. Signs can go up in two weeks. I would like to see the city council do something about that. I will be at the next workshop next month. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Counsel, just a quick comment on the, David has come in front of counsel now probably a half a dozen times with this concern. And we're all, we're very well aware of his concern. We're very well aware of what the situation is. And he's just asking for us to try to come up with some sort of solution to help. So as he has just told us, he's willing to come every month and remind us. And I'm sure, and I've gotten to know David well, I'm sure he will be here every month to remind us about this. So we need to decide what we can do, if we can do it, and how we can go about it to at least give him some relief. Any--
And protect the river.
Yeah. Okay. So maybe when we get to council comments, if members of the council want to speak to that, we can. All right. Anyone else signed up?
Patrick Shepard.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello there.
My name is Patrick Shepard, Mr. Mayor and Council. I live at 20202 Quail Run Drive, Blue Cove. Been here three years and absolutely love Dunellen. And I have something free for the town. And I'd like to share this with all of you.
Thank you, sir.
And I have plenty for everybody else. If anyone is interested, if it's free, it's for me, is one of the things. But I'm here to represent Dunellen Community Services. That's a nonprofit I started this year, and we're a live-01c nonprofit, and we're going to put on a free medical clinic here in Dunellen on November 20th of this year in coordination with the Freedom Clinic USA out of Ocala. And we're going to offer free dental, free medical, and free legal advice. So we have dentists coming, we have attorneys coming, and all of it is free, not one dime. All you have to do is sign up for it. We're going to have signs around the city, all over the place. It is truly for those of you that don't have medical, don't have insurance, underserved parts of our community, and we're just excited to do this. Mr. Mayor, you spoke at the event in 9/11 that we co-sponsored, elephant speech, by the way. And this is one of the many things that we're going to be doing, along with mentoring programs in the schools. Free clinic is something that I want to do at least four times a year here, and get involved with the community and address underserved portions of our community. So thank you for letting me part of this. And anyone, if you know anyone at all, please pass on to them the phone numbers. We've sent emails to every church. We've sent, and we're hand-walking brochures out into different parts of the community. We have almost 40 volunteers that are participating in this event, and this is just one of many that we're going to do. So thank you very much, and thank you for doing the presentation tonight.
Well, just one question. If anyone wants, is interested, they just simply call the number. That's right here.
Yes, sir. We make, we're making appointments for everybody. You know, the event is scheduled for that entire day. We want to accommodate as many people as we possibly can, and the teams will actually start setting up on this for Friday, and this will be at the Holy Faith Campus on Blue Cove Drive, Blue Run Drive.
How long will this program stay in effect as it starts?
The program is ongoing in Ocala. They have events there literally every other week. The program for here is, was last done here three years ago in the Catholic Church here in town. We want to have that program come back at least every three to four months. And if there's extensive care, we have programs that they can go to the doctors in Ocala for any additional service and care that they might need.
What time does it start? What time of day?
It starts at 8:30 in the morning. There's no time on the calendar, because we know people are going to show up early. We are trying to do this by appointment, so we can schedule everybody appropriately. We do provide food and water and refreshments to all the people that are attending this event, and plus feeding the volunteers. And again, completely free. Yes, ma'am.
How many people would you think you might be able to see during this time?
That--
But this is only one day, right?
Yeah, just one day. We've had in the, in the events before, 80 to 100 people show up. They've had 500 people show up in Ocala at the events when they do them. Pardon?
And they all got sick.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We just stay and help, and then if we, if we run out of people and run out of time, Lord knows, we'll come and do it again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Y'all have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Could I have another one also?
Ms. Odom, anyone else? Thank you so much. That was a great presentation. Almost, seems almost too good to be true. All right, our signed up speakers have spoken. Is there anyone in the audience that did not sign up that would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda? Okay, Ms. Odom, please note that everyone has had their opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much.
All right, now we go to, we're getting into the consent agenda. And you also have an opportunity, as the attendees here, to speak on items one through nine with the deletion of number two. So if you look at your agenda, if you see items one through nine, after a public comment, if there is any, then council will make a motion to pass all of these with one sweep. So if there's any comment on one through nine with the deletion of two, this is your opportunity to speak. All right, Ms. Odom, please take note that the opportunity of public speaking has been addressed. Do we have a motion by council to approve the consent agenda?
So moved without number two.
Without number two. Amended. As amended. As amended.
That's what I said.
I was getting it right for me. As amended. And we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. All right, if you're following along and you have your agenda with you, we are now at item number 10. We have a special presentation. I'm looking forward to this. Fast Track Dunellen, Tyler LaCombe.
LaCombe. That's a good try, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Name and address.
Tyler LaCombe, 6224 Southeast 130th Street, Bellevue. But I love Dunellen. We're here a lot. Who knows? We might move. I am here representing the Ocala Metro CEP, the Director of Entrepreneurship Services for the group out of Ocala. And recently, I've had the pleasure of putting on a class that the council was nice enough to invite us to perform earlier this year, and wanted to come and recognize some of the wonderful people that we had. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilwoman, staff. Thank you so much. We, if you'll go to the next one, just to say officially, the Ocala Metro CEP staff, along with Coffee Foundation, the Dunellen Chamber Business Association, and the city of Dunellen staff here in the building, which were so awesome, if I can say, would like to congratulate and recognize the following entrepreneurs and business owners who have recently successfully completed the Fast Track Business Launch Program in the city of Dunellen. For those that don't know, the Fast Track Business Launch Program is a 10-week intensive program. It's three hours a week, where the entrepreneurs met here in this room, and they met with professionals from a range of industries, accounting, legal, finance, marketing, technology, et cetera, how to take advantage of those areas in their businesses that they had ideas for or that they were existing. All of the graduates successfully completed the program. They put up with, with us, Jessica, the lead facilitator, who can't be here right now, Jessica McCallum, and then myself. But we really, really enjoyed ourselves. So I'd like to recognize them. So if you go to the next one, first will be Julie Mancini. Oh, and three of the graduates are here in the, in the building, so I'll ask them to stand up and we can recognize them. Julie Mancini Photography, Julie Mancini, Keith-- Everybody knows Julie. Keith Carson Weddings, Keith Carson. Next, we have Marilyn Welch with MW Consulting. River Monster Comics, Joshua Church, who just had his, his opening. We're very excited for Joshua. Yep, let's go to the floor. We had Diaz's Destiny Embroidery, which is Albert de Blanc and his wife, longtime company here in town. They took advantage of the opportunity to take a look and see what they could, could improve. And so we're very happy to have Albert in the class. And then next, we have now, we do have Judy Chilwelliger. Judy's here in the room. Judy is WEX Women's Power and Exchange. And the great part about that is kind of a fluid name. She's going to do so many things. That E is going to be several things. And then last, we don't have a photo. Unfortunately, she wasn't here the last day because she was, was homesick, and we hope she's doing well. Christina Rains with Cell Health LLC was our final bow. We'll have a class photo courtesy of Julie Mancini Photography. I wonder why they're such good photos. They're Julie's photos. So there's, there's our class. We had a lot of fun together. We really enjoyed meeting each other and working on each other's, on their business ideas and really encouraging them. I would like to, next please, would like to give a special thanks to Mayor Bill White. He actually joined us during one of the classes. It was nice enough to share his entrepreneurial experience, you know, prior to being mayor of Dunellen, of course. You should ask him one day. It's an amazing story. I'm not going to ruin it. I would like to thank the city of Dunellen, city council, the members and the staff, of course, for giving us the permission, you know, inviting us to come and to use this wonderful space. It was very hospitable here, very easy for us to do. So thank you so much for that. The city staff, again, here in the building. Special thanks to Michelle and Zimian D, who made it feel like home. Dunellen Chamber and Business Association, again, for working with us to invite some great businesses. The local Dunellen business owners and professionals who attended the class, as well as who joined us for the class to share what they knew. Local Dunellen-- class, as well as who joined us for the class to share what they knew, local Dan Allen restaurants for your amazing delicious food, I'm going to dinner right after this, I'm very excited. And of course, our wonderful class participants, who are just amazing, stop taking photos. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and that's it, we're all done. I know they gave me ten, but I don't have any.
I think it's amazing that you did that, I'm so excited that business community can come together here, that you brought it to us, and we didn't have to go to Ocala, so thank you very much.
Absolutely, it was, it was, it was really our pleasure to, to connect here locally, you know, and, and it's, it's just going to be, we're really looking forward to it next year, we're excited for the opportunity to come back, repeat the class. We are going to, we'll announce after the holidays what some expected dates might be, we'll come back to the council, obviously, present those to, to the group, and then we'll reopen the website for applications for next year, so we very much look forward to that for growing the class, and, and definitely over the holidays, consider your graduates, the new local entrepreneurs, help them get their businesses started by supporting local, shopping local, and that, so, anything else?
I would just like to say that I did attend the last meeting, and I had an opportunity to get some input from those that were in the program, and then I had opportunity to talk to them after you left.
Well, you got the real thing.
And I will say to you that, to the man, total enthusiasm by every one of the participants in the program, said it was well worth the time, just could, could not give you higher marks for that. It, they were impressed, so I, I hope you get a chance to come back and do this again.
Oh, we definitely will, yeah, absolutely, just right down the road, and I'll be back all the time, but we'll be back next year, thank you again, I appreciate it.
All right.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you.
Go eat dinner for us. Who's up with that? We won't leave here, champ.
All right, we go to Agenda Item Number Eleven, the Little League, before public comment, just give you a quick go-over on this. Council granted the Little League fifteen thousand dollars, basically to fix and get their lights in perfect working order, which they have. After completing that task of the fifteen thousand we had given them, they had three thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-six cents left over, and they've asked if they can apply that to some of their other needs. So, we are going to discuss that and make a motion on that before council does. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment on this item? Okay, no public comment. Can I have a motion to move the council to authorize the Dan Allen Little League to utilize the remaining balance of three thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-six cents of the City Council contribution of fifteen thousand for lighting improvement to serve the public purpose of making additional baseball facilities, repairs, and infrastructure improvements, with any funds not utilized for such purposes. Any funds not utilized for such purpose will be returned to the city.
So moved.
Okay, we, motion by the Vice Mayor, second by Ms. Williams. Any discussion?
Do we know what they're going to be putting them towards, or?
The only thing I think we would ask is, on the remaining balance to, if we pass this, is to give us an itemized accounting of where they've spent the remaining three thousand.
They have to, right.
This is tax money, and we are ultimately responsible.
And I think it's just awesome, it just gives them, keeps something to look forward to, keep them busy, out of trouble.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor, I think discussions overall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Please note it's passed unanimously. Now we come to item number twelve. It's the Agreement Technical Assistance Community Grant Historic District Enhancement Plan Implementation. From what I understand, Ms. Odom, if I am incorrect, please correct me, this is a continuation or a piggyback on Mr. Metcalf's previous grant that he had talked to us about, so now we're talking about whether we want to apply an additional grant to piggyback and go forward with some of his ideas and thoughts, correct?
That is his...
Basically, basically, okay. All right, so that's what this is about. Any public comment on item number twelve? I just gave you a very general description. Yes, Julianne?
I'll bring that up first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Sit down, sit in front.
I saw you.
Sorry about that.
Well, it can be ladies first.
Age before beauty.
Yeah, age before beauty. Thank you very much. I'm Bertino, I live at nine-two-two-zero, South West One Ninety-third Circle. I'm here to speak to this issue. I did so Wednesday, offered an opinion with regard to it, and I want to emphasize that opinion again. I think that what Metcalf came up with with regard to the historic plan or study was garbage. I can't see where it fits Dan Allen at all, and now to continue with implementing it makes no sense at all to me. I spoke against that Wednesday night. I think that if you're hungry enough to get the thirty-seven thousand dollars, then you ought to write an honest proposal that would be worthy of that, and not just think that you can take this and continue to do whatever you wish. Let's be honest about it. I think this is a bad practice, if you just simply accept money not for the right reason, and I think that this kind of practice ought to be nipped in the bud. I know as one taxpayer, I'm really irritated because I don't want, I don't want my tax money supporting DEO grants that are misdirected, like what seems to be the case in this one. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Reno. Julianne?
Julianne Mendon, City eleven-eight-nine-four, East Blue Cove Drive. A similar sentiment, I looked at the attachment on the agenda about this, and essentially it says that by moving this forward, that we're encouraging attracting and providing guidance for developers, there's a letter of interest package that will be developed to recruit developers for mixed-use village center, which was kind of that crazy idea of, I don't know, moving the boat ramp or something. So, I, I also think that going back to the source of the grant, to reject the work that was done by Metcalf is really an honest thing to do, I think just because there's grant money out there and we were approved for it, it still leaves us with responsibility to make sure that it's done right. So I think moving forward with it would, would be a waste of time. I'm also wondering, this Catherine Beck, who's come to talk about the downtown program, which really sounded promising, and like it wasn't going to cost us a lot, she sounded like she really wanted to work with us, I'm just wondering, like, those two programs seem to me to be a little bit like of the same purpose, that both people are trying to develop an idea for the downtown, and we probably only need one. So that's my comment, thank you.
Very well. Would anybody else like to speak to Agenda Item Twelve? Okay, Ms. Odom, please take note, public has had its opportunity to speak. Now council, we're going to make a motion, and then if there's a second, we'll discuss it and decide what we want to do. We need a motion, here's the proposed motion. Authorize staff to move forward with the DEO to finalize the grant agreement, AGR number twenty-twenty-one-dash-seventeen, DEO number PO four-two-five, with the mayor's signature, and authorize the city clerk to hire a consultant. Do we have a...
Mr. Mayor, before you speak, can we have staff talk to us about this before we even decide to make a motion on it?
I guess, right? Yeah? Okay, Vice Mayor?
Sure.
Staff? Anybody want to speak to it?
Yes, sir. So, since the workshop, me, Georgina, and Jan have discussed this at length, and gone back into the record and tried to get our heads around what has happened to date. As it turns out, in the history of what has occurred, the initial grant that was awarded for, that Ken Metcalf worked on, the deadline for the application for this grant, which would be the, the sort of the second phase or implementation of that initial grant, the application was made prior to his final presentation, and I know that the council was not in favor of that final presentation, however, the grant had already been applied for, this, this second phase. With Georgina being as new as she is, and me not being as familiar with this, because this was a community development project, it was head-up by Lonnie, he's gone, Teresa's gone, Don was involved to a certain extent, she's not here, so I really don't have someone to lean on in this case to go back and say, tell me this, or, you know, I have a lot of unanswered questions, we all have a lot of unanswered questions, and I cannot in good faith tell you that we would recommend as a staff moving forward with this until we were able to get answers to some of those questions. Georgina has worked through DEO to, to see if there would be any repercussions if the city decided not to accept the grant award at this time, and they've assured us that there would not be. So, it's not our recommendation at this time to move forward with it. So we don't even, I mean, we can have this done for lack of a, a motion.
All right, so, anybody else on staff that wants to comment on this?
Anyone?
All right. Vice Mayor is correct, we, we can handle this a number of ways, we can make a motion, have it second, you can vote to approve, or you can vote to say no. By doing it that way, you've made a statement, you've made a decision. To, as you have suggested, another strategy is to simply not have a motion and not have a second, and it dies for lack of counsel acting on it. That is the way we can, we can do it, if that's the way you want to do it. One thing I just want to remind council, just because we make a motion and we make a second to it, doesn't mean that the person that made the motion, or the person that made the second, is going to vote for it. You're just basically saying, I'm putting it out there for the council to vote. So, right now, I've asked for a motion, I have, is there anybody that wants to make a motion to authorize staff to move forward?
How about if I make this motion? I, I recommend that City Council follow the advice of staff and not approve this grant. With the motion, the motion, if you're going to go in that direction, would really need to direct staff to draft a letter to DEO declining the grant award.
That was my motion. That, that good, Mr.?
That's fine.
Okay, so...
All right, so...
And can we include authorize the mayor to sign that letter?
I have it in motion.
Authorize the mayor to sign it this week, yes.
Let me back up, Manny, just give me a second, Jan, and then, let me back it up. There was a proposed motion that did not get a, no, no one made the motion and no one seconded it. So now we have a new motion being created. Okay, so we have a new motion.
To direct...
Manny, can you, can you write it the best you can figure out what the motion is, and then we'll see if there's a second to it.
Okay. Andrew, feel free to stop me if I'm not saying this correctly. The motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign a letter to DEO declining the grant award.
That's fine. We have a second.
Second.
Ms. Williams, or, okay, council, discussion, we have a motion and a second. Ms., Ms. Covage?
Yeah, I think we're definitely heading the right way on this. The problem is the wording, and also was the lack of information we were giving. We thought we were following another grant that was very much like perhaps the distinctly Dan Allen Economic, I think we call it Asset Mapping Exercise by DOE in early twenty-twenty, and that grant involved community members, absolutely, lots of input from our community members that worked with staff that DOE sent, and we were well aware of what it accomplished, okay? It pointed out a lot of things that we needed to address, and once we had that document to work with, then that would help us as we're getting grants to enhance our historic district. So we kind of went into thinking, well, here, here's a follow-up on that grant, and more suggestions, but the problem is, suddenly, we are, once we accept that second grant, we are obligated to implement Ken Metcalf's suggestions, and that's where we have, why we have to kill this grant acceptance. When, Ken Metcalf came to us on March seventeenth, and I'd like to thank our city staff, Mandy, for printing out the comments that, the workshop of June ninth, everyone here sitting on council had something very pointed and pertinent to say about why Metcalf's plans were not on target with what we believe would be the best for our historic district, so... He didn't read, he didn't read...
You also have a comment of what she's reading right now, you should have one of your...
Yeah, for example, very briefly, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this because it's in front of you, US forty-one commercial stretch is a necessity for the residents who frequent those businesses in day-to-day life, that we don't need to wipe out our commercial section there on forty-one. Vice Mayor Hancher thanked Mr. Metcalf for his work, but she said, yep, her, Vice Mayor Hancher's comment was, she didn't feel it was appropriate in that our community would go along with the concept of changing City Hall boat ramp location that the snap of the fingers, Metcalf suggested, we work with Citrus County to form a bi-county municipal boat ramp, just like that. Yeah, okay, so, Councilman Kenny said the scale and feasibility is more than we can financially handle, says there's a lot of public enhancement, she doesn't think that includes two-story buildings on forty-one, so, we all had plenty of comments of why we didn't like it. Mr. Metcalf never replied, didn't take into consideration of our feelings, our comments, and our perceptions, and we, this is our town. For someone to come from Tallahassee, spend two days here and tell us, I got the plan for your city, and now you're going to have to implement it if you accept the second phase of this grant from DOA, no, I don't think we should do that, not applicable. So, that's where I stand on this, and we're definitely, I think we're definitely going the right direction for canning this acceptance of the second phase and third phase of the grant.
Okay. Ms. Kenny, do you have any comments?
No, I think that Councilwoman Covage expressed all of our feelings, and I appreciated what Mandy had to say, it's probably the staff's fault, and I was not...
Ms. Williams?
Do you disagree with staff? I appreciate Mandy explaining.
Vice Mayor?
No, I mean, I'd like for us to go over some of these tax grant, I, I mean, some of the enhancements, I mean, some of them were good. the enhancements, I mean, some of them were good, you know? Apply for Main Street program, locate street trees, schedule Arbor Week for trees planting, but I think those are things that we can do in-house, and you've already got the vaults rolling on that, so I applaud you for that. So, again, there are some really good things. You take the good, the bad, the ugly, you mix it all up, and you come out with a beautiful flower, so have faith in you.
Thank you.
Sorry for the hard work.
It's all right, I'm enjoying it.
The only question I have maybe for Ms. Smith is this new grant that we're talking about right now. This can't be applied in any other way than piggybacking on the Metcalf report. In other words, we can't say we don't like the first one you did. Do a redo with this new grant. You can't do that. I just want to make sure we're not giving, okay? So, it has to either be hooked onto his or not? Okay, that's my comment.
I had that earlier today.
Any additional comments?
Yes, I'd like to thank our new development planner person, Georgiana Sid, for the work she did to present to us today. This was awesome. I mean, this, I love to see things done in order, and I love charts. Thank you so much.
Thank you, it's my pleasure.
Okay, I think that concludes discussion. We have a motion and a second on the floor to reject the new grant. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please note that was passed unanimously. We go to item number 13. For those that are looking at number 13, kind of scratching your head, I'll just give it as I see it, that those that, hey, they're bills to the city with a credit card, we in the past have been picking up the charge for the credit card. If you use a credit card now, you will have to, the person that's using the credit card will have to pay the expense of the credit card. Is that correct? All right, there it is. Except public comment on that. Okay, please note that there is no public comment, and they were offered an opportunity. So, we're going to have a proposed motion. I move resolution number R E S 2021-20 be read by title only. Does that leave a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Proposed motion, I move resolution.
She has to read it.
Oh, you have to read it, I'm sorry, okay.
Resolution number R E S 2021-20, resolution of the City Council of the City of Donnellan, Florida, adopting a credit slash debit card surcharge, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Odom. Now, we go to another motion. I move resolution number R E S 2021-20 be approved.
I move.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Williams? Any discussion? No comment by council. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously.
Mayor, let me remind you that before you go on to item number 14, council discussion, we need to go back and revisit item number two that was pulled from the consent agenda.
Very good. Thank you. All right, council, we're going back to item number two that was on the consent agenda and was removed from the consent agenda by request. Basically, what this is about, we had two parcels that we had talked about getting appraised for approximately, rounded off somewhere in the vicinity of $3,000 apiece. One of the properties was the two lots that are on Powell Road, and the other property was the restaurant, what's the restaurant, Dinner Bell?
Gruff's.
Gruff's Restaurant. We have been told by various people who have expertise in appraisals that the lots that are for sale are, the asking price is clearly beyond what a reasonable appraisal would come. As y'all know, we cannot pay more for a piece of property than its appraised price. So, just want to bring it to council's attention that to go forward and having those lots appraised, the chances are overwhelming that the asking price will be significantly higher than the appraised price, and we might be spending $3,000 for nothing.
That is correct. Based on the assessed value of the property by the property appraiser, if you tack on 25% of that, to that, it comes to about 115. And they're asking 140, and I was approached by the property owner last Thursday, and he asked, he wanted clarification. He wanted to know for sure if the property comes in appraised less than 140, if that was the most that the city could pay for it. I confirmed that with him, and he confirmed with me that they were not willing to drop the price below 140. So, I don't think it's cost-effective to get an appraisal on a property that you know is not going to appraise for what they're asking, knowing that they're not willing to negotiate.
All right, is it correct, Andrew, that item number two, since it was removed from the consent, it is now discussed that the public should have an opportunity to speak to number two?
Yes, if council is going to make a decision tonight on that, then the public should be able to speak to it.
Before council has a discussion and makes a motion and possibly a passage, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to agenda item number two? Julianne?
Julianne Mendel, say 11892 East Blue Cove Drive. As far as the, I was surprised to hear about the lots, but I understand that that's sort of off the table. I was going to speak to the appraisal of Gruff's and just say that I would be opposed to moving forward with the appraisal of Gruff's Restaurant. Even if this restaurant was appraised to be equivalent to the asking price, we would be back to square one at the cost of retrofitting. I reminisce back to not too long ago when the city requested over a million dollars in a USDA Community Rural Assistance Grant to retrofit the church, and we learned that that grant wasn't available to retrofit anything. So, the fact that we would be looking at a building that, I don't know, it would surprise me if it was really in our budget to have Gruff's, then we would be back at square one with architects and trying to figure out how much it would be to retrofit it. And on top of that, then we would maybe face not being able to use grant money for that again. But if we looked at a, if we decided that we needed to move forward with the police and we could find a property for the modular, then perhaps when that same grant became available next year, we would have an opportunity to get a chunk of money for the modular if we determine that that's what, that's what would meet the city's policing needs. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak number two? Yes.
Kathy Dunn, 1138 600th Drive. I'm adamantly opposed to buying anything else until we sold the church that we bought a year and a half ago or whatever, especially considering the fact that we have 2,000 people, we are $2 million in debt, and we have no income-producing utilities anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Would anyone else like to speak to agenda item number two? Okay, please note that we have allowed the public to speak now. Council, it's back on us what we want to do. The options are to go forward and have both of these properties appraised. The option is to have one of them appraised, or the option is to have neither one of them appraised. So, we'll leave this open for discussion, unless someone wants to make a motion first on which way you want to go, and then we can take it from there. Vice Mayor, would you like to make a motion?
No, sir.
No motion, okay. So, we'll just open for discussion first. Ms. Covage, give us your thoughts.
Go back to square one again. Problem again, of course, I think is still, is going to be the appraisal with Gruff's too. As Mandy gave us the information that he would go down to, what, $950,000 for the property?
That was, that was one indication when he was informed that we don't, or we can't statutorily pay more than what the property is appraised for. He did indicate he would work with the city, but I don't think it would be my.
And appraisal value, tax appraisal value on that property is?
The assessed value is 690-something thousand.
And I'm just going to throw in my real estate little bit expertise there, and I think Ms. Kenny can as well. It's, those numbers are, as citizens who have to pay our taxes on our homes, we love that the county does not appraise our properties at real values and today values. So, that's a blessing. But for us, that's what we only have to go on without spending a few thousand dollars. So, I mean, I've asked around, I don't want to comment on what somebody said because I don't have it in front of me, they didn't, but I don't know if the 950 is the value I would put on if I was looking at. Let's just put it that way. So, go ahead, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, the difference is 310,000 if you do the math. That's a big sum, considering that we would have to take money out of general funds. And I happen to agree that it probably would be very wise for us to wait until Soul's Harbor Church is sold. That would give us, hopefully, about 400,000, you know, if we could get some interested party interested, and they were serious, 400,000 plus the 360, that's already budgeted in 2021, budget for the police department. So, what are we left with? We're left with 400-some thousand dollars to pull out of our general fund. So, I think, I would happen to agree with Kathy Dunn, just sit on this and wait till the Soul's Harbor Church is purchased, and then come back to reality.
Thank you. Ms. Kenny?
Well, we have been going through this for quite a while, and I don't know what the interest is in terms of the police department necessarily for Gruff's. But the way I view what we have been doing in the past is we have been ignoring our comprehensive plan and our zoning districts in order to find something that we thought would be reasonable and appropriate. What I like about Gruff's on the positive side is it is on a commercial corridor. It's not only on a commercial corridor, but it is in conjunction in terms of our municipal building. And I do feel that planning is something that you have to use your imagination for and think what would be in the interest of the future. And if we are going to be doing something, which we think we will be most certainly, in order to generate income, we are going to be looking at, with Lakucha, which is going to need some kind of definitely, probably individuals who will be needing office areas, and it could be very functional. I think of it almost as an opportunity. It's a beautiful building, I think. I think we would have to be very careful in terms of hardening the building. I think we would have to be certainly more conservative than we would like to be in terms of the needs of the police, but it would be something immediate. And it would be a clean building where they would probably be quite comfortable and might be willing to wait for some kind of additional grant in order to harden the building and in order to get some of the things that they possibly will need. But I find it attractive. So, there you go. That, those are, those are my feelings. I think it's an opportunity, and I would be willing to go with that particular purchase. The main reason again would be because we are not cutting into our residential districts. We are not, we will have a residential district where people can buy property, build their homes, have their retirement years, and not be concerned that something inappropriate will be next door to them and will lower their property value. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Williams? I have to ask, I have to ask.
Well, I know, I know, I don't have a problem with the Gruff building either. I mean, but we're going through all of this, we don't know what it's going to be appraised for. It could be appraised for more than what we can purchase for, right? Well, did I say that right?
It could be appraised for.
I don't know. I just know police apartment need to move, we worried about money, it's going to be here when we're dead and gone. We're always going to be, that's the truth, we're always going to be spending money, you know? And as far as our concern, they should have been in the Soul Harbor's building months ago. So, that's all I have to say. It's ridiculous.
Vice Mayor?
That's my opinion.
My double amen, so, I won't brave on anybody, I promise. But when I did a little chart here, and you brought up an idea about doing the tear down of, not Gruff's, Gary's Carpet, and I think you said like 325?
Well, she said she would entertain.
Okay, so, let's just say 325 for giggles. But then, while we're building, we don't know where they're going to go because we were going to tear down the other place too. So, that one, good idea, I get it if we had, but that one's a no. Again, we don't know the cost, that would just be expensive. Vacant land is now off the table, so Gruff's, let's just say he would sell it to us for 950,000. We're still going to have our retrofitting, which, again, I think it's a great location. I agree, wonderful location. Retrofitting, again, we're probably still going to have to spend that 400,000, 500,000. So, let's just say 950,000. We already have 335,000 that we can play with because it's in our budget right now. That leaves us owing 615,000. Let's say we sell the police department where it is right now, that would give us 465,000, and then we'd owe 65,000 just to buy the building still. We haven't even gone in there yet with any paint, I T., or anything, okay? So, I'll just let you know the numbers. Now then, don't everybody shoot me, and then Ms. Williams will at least. But let's come back to some common sense. We own a building. It is done, it is ready, for 700,000, and that's us putting on some bells and whistles, and that includes engineering, that includes everything done at once. That would be Soul's Harbor Church, which actually should be named Donnellan City-owned building. It has already passed all the planning and zoning. The residents do not mind it. I personally walked and talked to every one of them around the neighborhood. I went and talked to them. Do what, ma'am?
I'm sorry, it's not even far from the other locations.
It's not even far from the other locations. And please remember, Gruff's is still in the historic district, right where our police department is still in the historic district as well right now. So, we already have 335,000 that we could put immediately to get Troy in chief to go get people, and let's wrap this puppy up. That means we would owe another 185,000 to finish up that project, which we can, we have in reserves. Common sense. Thank you.
And apparently, nobody cares about the safety, and we're just playing around with this while the police department, the, these law enforcement officers are working in an unsafe, unprofessional environment. Crazy.
Ms. Kenny?
Well, another thing that I would say that Gruff's does have besides the location and besides the building is the parking in front. Amazing. It would be parking that would be very valuable for future growth, and parking over on the front lawn of Soul Harbor's Church would be an eyesore for everyone who has, that would culture the historic area. That would be the same in terms of power. That would be the same in terms of power in Illinois in part, I'm concerned. Parking is valuable and parking is expensive and that is a super parking spec in front.
And that was why Soul's Harbor Church was partially purchased because of the parking?
That would be on grass and never.
Okay. Uh, my comments on it, uh, my comments on it, uh, it's what we're talking about right now. This is not a commitment to do anything. It's just, again, trying to gather information. The idea is if Gruff's is a consideration, we need X amount of dollars to get an appraisal. That's, city has to do that. What, what was the quote on the appraisal for Gruff's, Ms. Odom?
Three thousand, thirty-five hundred?
Can you remember what?
It's three thousand and Georgina did reach out to a couple of other firms that do appraisals and they were both more expensive than our original quote. But we, we have gotten three quotes and three thousand was the least expensive.
All right, so for three thousand dollars, we get an idea if this property is doable. And there's a lot of pluses and minuses. The pluses are the location. I think everyone knows that sitting right there on forty-one, right where it's at, would be a beautiful location. Second thing is the parking, the parking's already done. A lot of the discussion on Soul Harbor Church when we're talking about the building and whatever, it's not also including that, that entire grassy area will have to be paved with the drainage and whatever. There's big money right there. Anyone that's saying that we can go into Soul Harbor Church for three or four hundred thousand and it includes the mandate that there has to be pavement there, you're not gonna do it for that. So I'm looking at right now with Gruff's, just having that parking already there, based on what it costs to do Bernie Mills Park, I'm using those figures. Probably a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of pavement already put there that you don't have to do. I think the location is great, I like the idea that the building is set back where the police cars that may be parked there are a little bit out of view. It's not like you're having parked police cars right in front of you that, um, I don't care how new the police cars are or how nicely they're parked, they're police cars. And that's not exactly like looking at live oak trees and flowers and whatever. I'm, I'm an information junkie. Whenever I make moves on anything, whether it's personal, especially when it has to do with money, I want to know the numbers, I want to know so I can make a good decision. So for three thousand dollars, we're gonna find out whether Gruff's is doable or not. If it is doable, we can go forward, great. If it's not doable and we can't go forward, it's just the price of doing business. It just costs money to do this. So this is, this is just simply council deciding whether they want to come up with three thousand dollars to get the information they need, we need to decide what we want to do and if we can do it. The other options are still out there. This does not preclude looking at other options. This just is to put this one into the mix for a consideration. So, there is not, there is not yet a motion, yet.
I'd make a motion that we proceed to get an appraisal on the property.
On Gruff's?
On Gruff's, yes.
I'd like to second that motion.
Second. Okay, we have had discussion, but since there was a motion and a second that does allow council to be, want to say one more thing, you can't, or we can just bring it to a vote right now. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to go forward with the appraisal on Gruff's. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye, nay.
What, what's your vote, Ms. Williams?
I oppose.
You oppose. Cast is three two, I vote yes.
And it's not because I don't want the place in a new building, I just, common sense.
Okay. Ms. Odom, you have your marching orders understood? All right. We're off of item number two and we get back to the regular agenda. So that brings us to number fourteen, council discussions. This is where council can bring up various things that are on our mind, things that we've seen in between meetings, things we want to talk about. Start off with you, Ms. Kenny, do you have any, do you have anything you would like to bring up to council?
No, I do not.
Ms. Williams?
I would just like to publicly, publicly thank the police department. They assisted a citizen that was stuck at the sit-go with the keys locked in the car, sitting right at the gas station. And we made every attempt to get in touch with, um, AAA to know they were sold. The citizen says, well, I know the police department would help, I called, they jumped right on it. So I just want to publicly thank y'all for helping that citizen. It was very nice, it took a little bit, but y'all got it done, thank you.
Ms. Covage?
Yeah, um, this is a kind of directed to our police department too, but also to all of us. It's getting cold outside and I don't know what the situation here is with homeless people. Some of those people are transits that come through here. But I was wondering, do we have any emergency helps, um, situation where someone can call and help someone who is destitute? Okay, and I'll tell you what happened, I went to Tractor Supply, it was already dark Saturday, Friday. It was pouring down rain and a little lady, when I say little, I would say eighty-five pounds and she was soaking wet. Okay, and she was elderly, I would say older than myself and I'm way over the hill. And she was, she approached me as I was entering my vehicle and she said, I need, can you help me? I need eight dollars and seventy-five cents to buy gas for my gas heater. And I said, you look cold and wet, and she says, yes, I'm hungry too. And I said, where, where do you live? And she says, my family threw me out of my home in Romeo, I'm living in a tent in woods. Okay, so I gave her money and I also, um, I also gave her jacket I had in my, uh, in my car and I advised her to go to Annie Johnson Center in the morning. But my concern was because of her age and condition is where could I have called for emergency shelter for this person? Do we have anything set up yet or, or should we do this?
I can answer, just as Donnellan Presbyterian church, okay? We have, um, people come to us all the time and we even have it, we set them up in a hotel for a night or two. So I know the community does, our community at least, and my church does reach out to help and do those kind of things.
Then can we have some kind of information given to us, all those council people, maybe even put it in Riverland News? If people are in these situations, here's the contact numbers for the different churches, Annie Johnson and so on. Because here I am, I'm sitting on council and I, I don't know who to call. I mean, it's Friday night, it's late, it's dark, it's raining. What could I have done? What work could I have done? Okay, and, and I, by the time I went home, I'm thinking, I should have done more, okay? This lady could be sick maybe, she could be back, you know? So is there a way we can get a list of contact numbers together and have it published? Or have it, have it, um, published in the, in the Riverland News, whatever?
Most of the churches in Donnellan would give money if they qualify.
Right. I'm asking for the, I'm sure they will, I'm asking for how can we get a list of contact names, numbers and these churches together? And they, and give, and give it to council, to give it to us, okay?
Councilwoman Covage, I'm actually gonna touch on this subject a little bit with my comments, maybe we can tie into it.
Go for it. I guess the ball.
Okay, all right. Vice Mayor?
Just real quick, um, I know we all have our own different styles of doing the meetings and how we've done them in the past, but tonight I saw two instances where it would have been very nice to have asked our staff to either introduce the subject or to explain the meaning of the, the, you know, the meeting agenda for certain things. I, I really would like for us to go back to where, if it's dealing with finance, that Jan, you can go, Jan, can you please describe to us, you know, number ten or number nine, little league for instance, you know? Whatever it is, that way it helps the citizens and they don't have to raise their fingers to be asked if they can help us out making the wisest decisions. It's something that I think helps everybody. That way we're all exactly aware of what the, um, what the proposals that we're about to vote on are about. And it's coming from staff direction of explaining it to us. And we've asked you to put it on and now, you know, you could have helped us out, Mrs. Odom, with regarding the DEO or Georgina could have. So I, I just would really kind of like for maybe staff to, especially on the, I mean, like, some of these are still simple, but then they're gonna be a little more complicated that they actually are given the opportunities to talk to us and explain to us why it's being presented and their professional views on it. So that it helps us better understand. So I, I think that's just something that would be useful to all of us and, um, you know, it, it just helps us roll a little bit faster as well. That's my opinion.
Okay, Vice Mayor. All right, thank you. As the chair and having prerogative, I will take your suggestions under consideration.
Right, kind of.
Okay. But my term does come up in three years and.
No, it's not, it's not, sir.
You can go for it and you can do it the way you want.
Stop, stop, stop. No, 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 that wasn't even funny. I, I am just asking because I saw tonight in two different things. I had a staff member say, I need to speak. And I think if they, if our staff is allowed to speak at the beginning of our thing, then it's, it's a free-flowing form of educating everybody, us, the audience and those listening in the audience, you know, in Zoom land. So it's nothing to do with you personally, sir, it's just as an education, okay?
I'm just saying to you, as the chair, I have the right to do what I'm doing.
And I will take it into consideration, which you're suggesting. Thank you, sir.
Okay. A couple of things I want to bring up very, very brief is that RV presentation that was given at the workshop, council did make a lot of extensive comments to, to that presentation. Please keep in mind that those comments are at this point neutral. The planning commission is gonna come your way, you should not be influenced by what council is saying at this point. Council will, will come back to us and at that point, we can discuss it, give up, give strong opinions and make a vote. So things that were said, whether they were positive or negative, can't be construed that any individual council person is gonna vote that way or another. It was just part of the, part of the discussion. Want to compliment Troy. Yesterday, we had some issues with our telecommunications over at the art building. Got a little scary, I'm not gonna say too much, that'll be part of your report. But I do want to thank you, you did call me on Sunday, late afternoon, twice to keep me appraised. And I appreciate that on a Sunday. I don't know if I appreciate it, but I acknowledge that you, you did do that. One thing, uh, Ms. Covage, that I would like to piggyback with you is in my conversation with Troy, I asked him, what do we do in the after hours? You know, we do know that staff is off Friday, Saturday and Sunday, but yet the city continues to function. Things happen during that seventy-two hours. Do we have electric, electricians lined up that have agreed ahead of time to, uh, to be on call? Do we have plumbers? Kind of goes along with what Ms. Covage is saying when we're in off-hours, whether it's when everybody's gone home for day or even worse, when everybody's gone for the weekend. What's in line, who, who gets called, how does it go? And I, I would like staff to take a look at that and, um, especially with the people we call in emergency situations, I'm not talking about the police or the first responders. When we need an electrician on Sunday morning, who is it that we call? Do we just go to the phone book and, and just go down the line? Or do we have someone we've already talked to ahead of time who says, I'm agreeable to do that? So I would like staff, I would suggest staff to do that. I think that would be really good to have that written down so everybody understands. And the last thing I want to say, Ms. Covage, I want to tip my hat to you on putting some time into that second grant that we spoke of at length tonight and voted to decline. I think it was between, because of your persistence of digging into it and understanding it and bringing it to council's attention. I was at the point, it was just a grant that seemed like on the surface made sense. It's a grant that's gonna be applied to historic section. Probably not one of those things I'm gonna read line by line and totally understand it. So to your credit, you broke it down and you brought it to our attention. And I think you can take credit as much as anybody for tonight's vote. Job well done. So that's, that's my comments.
That's because I'm a hard-headed follower.
I, I.
Hard-headed what?
I didn't know that.
Oh, Lord.
Okay, we're at, I think that's the end of council comments.
Well, I do have one more.
As long as there's not a story.
It's gonna be really short. Lady from Blue Cove voicing concerns about B and Bs. I've had a number of people call me about problems with guests that come to town for whatever reason. One of the things that happens is there's two bedrooms in that B and B and they end up having a big party there, a celebration, family reunion, big birthday, even wedding receptions. And their cars end up pugging up the streets in the neighborhood and so on, they play music late. However, those people who own those homes are allowed to, they're allowed to rent those homes, either long-term lease or short-term leases. And I think our citizens just need to understand, if there's a problem with your neighbor and they have a B and B and those guests get rowdy, who do we call? Okay, those people over there, okay? And also they need to have conversations with those landlords. It is not council's responsibility to address issues with B and B. And this is something going on at every community in Florida, I give that.
Okay, thank you. That concludes council comments and discussion. Number fifteen, community, community liaison reports. We have an eight reports from, anything, okay. Number sixteen, nope, no reports on fifteen, right? Number sixteen, department head comments. Troy, why don't we, you always seem to come up speaking last, why don't you speak first on this?
All right, I'll make it as briefly as I can, but I do have a couple of important items. Need counsel to understand, one, as the mayor mentioned yesterday evening, or yesterday afternoon, we had an electrical issue in the art gallery at the Crowell Building. It was bad enough, the power was shut off to the entire complex. So we should get a electrician out there to isolate the problem, get power restored to the optical cell side. So that was the reason I called the mayor to give him the heads up. This phone is about to start breaking off the hook. You have communications, the internet shuts down. Because that optical tell branch right there does service the city of O'Callaghan. Complexes as well as a lot of our residents between here and O'Callaghan. Anyways, we were able to get the power restored to that side of the phone before that occurred. I don't think there was any interruption of service except the Art City Hall getting lose phone service. But in the meantime, we are looking at a complete, a needed, complete new panel box in the art gallery side of the building. Roughly, I would assume that to be about $2,000. Bear, not counting the emergency services calling out the electricians from last night. In addition to that, the emergency generator transfer switch that forced from the building has malfunctioned. For now, we bypass it. Found out that optical tell has not maintained or repaired the emergency generator for the building. So I will not be looking into putting money into the transfer switches until they have their obligation to fix the emergency generator. But I will keep Mandy fully aware of the progress on that. I should be getting estimates from the electrical company that came out and did the emergency repair last night. We do have power restored to the building. In the meantime, they had 14 students signed up for art lessons today. And didn't know what they were going to do to keep that class alive, seeing as how everybody paid up front. So I hope you don't hide. I gave them public works building for the evening.
I saw all the cars.
Go by at about three miles an hour, wondering what was going on in public works.
That's one thing that did slow me down on Bossy Street.
That was 16, 17 students.
Awesome. Thank you, girl.
Good to thank it on your feet.
Okay, the second major topic is our police department. We have a plumbing issue that is getting worse by the day, by the week. We are losing water pressure in the building. Cannot figure out why. We have one bathroom that, only one side of the faucet is working. Have plumber come out and take a look at the situation. And because of the old cast iron pipes feeding into the building and most of the pipes inside the building, the little 3/8 copper tubing, they feel that it needs significant amount of work. So I had them provide me with three different options on that. Basically, two different options with also the required backflow prevention device that that building is not having. But we'll have to get it. Backflow prevention device is going to run us an estimated $1,300 to $1,400 to do a cleaning of the pipes. In other words, shut it down, purge the pipes, try to find out where the fogs are. It's even resolvable that way. Replacing the hot water tank and breaking that up to code. The estimate starts at $2,400. It could go higher than that because it's a estimate. They may be able to fix it today. It may take them a couple of days. The for sure option to rectify the problem is about $10,000. This is completely repiping the police department to accommodate the two bathrooms. Brand-new fixtures on the sinks and valves in the toilets as well as a brand-new hot water here all front of it.
My name, my name, my name.
These is, this is only the first set of rough estimates that I got for this project. I have another plumbing company coming in this Thursday to assess the situation as well. So I'm hoping we get two or three companies to look at if something comes up with a simpler, quicker fix. But in the meantime, we are looking at probability of their water not working here with the next one.
So, excuse me, Ms. Mayor. So they have one bathroom, two bathrooms. One, only half of the sink works?
Yes.
Okay, and the second bathroom is fully working?
Yes, with very low water pressure.
And we've got the copper pipes in there?
There's copper tubing.
Tubing, right.
3/8 tubing inside the building, but there's galvanized pipe feeding on it. So my concern with the quick cleaning of the pipe system and putting in new fixtures is all we're going to do is break more rust loose and problems are going to reoccur.
That's what I was worried about with the cleaning. We're going to...
If it's getting worse over the last, I want to say, less than a month, the last three weeks that we've been looking into this, I think more investigating or repair we have to do is going to create more problems. So...
All right.
And I would like counsel to recognize that this is what I would consider an emergency repair to keep services on in that building. So between now and the next council meeting, I'm hoping to have these repairs done. They will be over $5,000.
Are they going to be doing the Sonic?
I don't have...
You know what I'm talking about, the Sonic? Because I had to have that at my house once.
Yeah, it was not, it was not offered by the first company. They gave this to the second company. Maybe more good than that.
My apologies, officers.
I will work directly with our city clerk and our finance director to get this resolved as quickly as possible. And the last thing is FGUA. There's a hydrant at the intersection of Walnut Street and Cedar Street, which is directly across from the Grumman House, Hydro Number Four. It's been leaking for several weeks. Investigated it. They're ready to do a repair. However, during their exploratory investigation, they found out there's a major water line that's leaking as well in that close proximity and close proximity of the power pole. This project is going to require three to four different contractors working together like a symphony to get it done. They expect that it should only take one day to do it with Duke Energy on-site, stabilizing the power pole. But I just want to let counsel know. And it tentatively is scheduled for next Wednesday, the 17th. So you see our contractors digging in the ground next to my brand-new road. They will not be cutting into my new road. So, but just to let you guys know that that will be going on in the historic history. Try to do it where it's less busy in the middle of the week rather than on the weekend. And right now, I think that's, that's it. You asked me, or make a statement about the streets in Blue Cove.
And the D R A.
And the conditions of the D R A in the streets.
Yes.
I have received multiple complaints from every resident close proximity to that D R A. We go out there weekly, investigate it. We have not been able to make it into the core of that D R A for two years now because it does hold water. It does stay full. We do maintain it, keep the city property, the swales, the ditches, everything is cleaned and mowed. We need it as regularly as possible. When it's not, they saw a mess. We're the owners of this stuff. So I personally have worked out there with the crew on it and I personally go out there more so we can do the inspection on that D R A. If we get lucky enough throughout this current season this year, the water subsides, which we know our water table is extremely high compared to what it's been in the last five years. Over the last three years, it's been slowly increasing. And I just got the rain report this month. From January till now, we've received almost 80 inches of rain a year. So that's twice the amount of annual rainfall that we will get. And our water table is still sitting above 80% of that. So as it drains, we cut further in. And I promise I'll stay vigilant with that particular project. Counsel, also remember you were an extra $10,000 in my budget, an extra $50,000 in my budget to address road conditions primarily in Blue Cove area for the intersections. So that is a project that we will be doing.
I recall it being $150,000.
I'm sorry, you are correct. $150,000, yes. For the three major intersections that are in very poor condition, which right now that project is looking like we will also be able to do that length of road connecting those three intersections. So it's not three patches. It will be a section of road including those three intersections. And we also may be able to get the short section of road in front of the church. The major worst areas in Blue Cove is stated in our budget. So just so the residents know, the counsel knows, we are doing, we have this year's budget. Can't think of anything else you requested.
Yeah, Troy, I have just a couple of things for you. Blue Cove, we know that there's a lot of issues in Blue Cove. And we also know we have big plans for Blue Cove. That $150,000 is going to be big in our plans. You also know there's a lot of concern over the drainage and we know why, because of the rainfall. So what we need to do is somehow, some way, get this information to the residents of Blue Cove to let them know that help is on the way. So we, staff might put some ideas together how you can, rather than one person at a time, kind of get it out there, what we have going on.
So ahead of you on that, in the work with our engineers, you ever been to the city hall in Everness? You see all their major projects that are slated for the year are on poster boards with conceptual drawings, full information, scheduled timeframes, timelines and so forth. Well, that's what we're going to be trying to do with our engineers. Come up with something of that, that can be on our city's website and posted here at city hall as well as at Public Works. So that when people enter the evening meetings, come in, they'll be able to see that Ohio Street and Cedar Street are moving forward. We're just waiting for the bids to come in then. And what it's tentatively going to look like for the projects to complete. Do that, same thing with any budgeted item that we have in our close relationship. Blue Cove, give a full description of what that $150,000 is intended to be used for. So I will work with the rest of the staff and try to get some on our website to justify and to show where it is in the budget.
If there's, I know there's residents of Blue Cove sitting in the room right now. If you could get with Troy and come up with some ideas how we can get the word out rather than one at a time, you know, possibly a small meeting with Troy or something, that might be helpful.
In addition to that, it's good for the residents of Blue Cove as well as the rest of the residents of the city to realize that there's multiple projects in play right now. Taking into consideration the extra federal rag funds that we got for stormwater this year. And we're looking into the intersections along that way. They're all flooded, crushed and mud pits. Okay, so Bob Springs, Cherokee Circle. Some of that $960,000 is going to be focused into the lower end of Bob Springs. These are projects that are always in the works. And I agree, it's not always our public knowledge and public approval.
Okay, then my last comment towards you is let's flip back to the problems ongoing with the police station right now, with the plumbing. These would be issues that we'd be dealing with regardless of where counsel was at with the building of a building. Whether we were building a modular, we would be not finished. If we were doing a retrofit of Soul Harbor Church, we would be not finished. So regardless of the delays, the discussion or how this has been drawn out, what you stated to us would be something that would have to be done regardless of where we're at, correct?
Absolutely, yes. And I didn't mean that if it came across any other way than that. Anything to deal with the electrical, the integrity of the structure, the roof or the plumbing, something that keeps that building in service would have to be done. But we're ready to move out of there in 60 days.
Correct.
Because if the counsel decides to sell that building, obviously, that factor. Or even if we're planning on tearing the building down. But we're looking at, like, the art gallery has a major electrical issue that we're in repair. Can't leave it that way, not knowing that we're going to renew the lease next year.
Correct. I just want to make sure that the information that you have given us isn't directed in a way that comes across like as well because counsel hasn't made a decision on what to do with the police building. Now we're on the hook for $10,000 worth of plumbing. No, we're on the hook for $10,000 worth of plumbing regardless of what happened. I just want to make sure. Okay.
Yeah, I didn't mean for it to come out very vivid.
I was just, I just want to make that clear. Okay, are you done, Troy?
I fully agree.
Thank you, thank you very much. Georgina? Pull that microphone close and speak up. We want to hear every word you say.
Well, I wanted to mention about Main Street reorganization. We're bringing that information over to the planning commission so that way we can get some of the items that are required for the reorganization of Main Street done. It has to be approved by the planning commission. So that will be something that I will be bringing forward. And I also wanted to clarify the previous comment about the budget regarding the CRA. We have $100,000 set out for facade improvements. And that is part of the CRA budget. That is not the entire CRA budget that I mentioned to Ms. Dunn. I just wanted to clarify that so that we're on the same page because we really appreciate how she's helping the city. And we want to make sure that she understands that is what I meant when I said that. And we are really trying hard to get that CRA budget to the T, that everybody understands what is involved in that. And I know that there's a lot of projects that are coming together with the entire budget, you know. So that's, I wanted to mention that. The other thing I wanted to say was that we are acting in a reactive mode within code enforcement just because of the, you know, we only have one staff and it's part-time within code enforcement. So we have been working on that end in a reactive manner, not being proactive. But we are trying to get that, to get that moving as well. And we've come up with a flyer that is going to come out with the next utility bill that basically outlines questions and answers for the different code enforcement issues that are going around so that residents are informed of what they need to do. If, you know, if they are, if our code enforcement officer reaches out to them, they know exactly, you know, what are the issues that they're going to be confronted with. And we want to avoid, you know, issues such as overgrown lawn, you know, facades that are not painted or that are completely, you know, in bad shape, things of that nature. R Vs parked in the wrong place, all those things. We're trying to mitigate that by putting out that flyer so that people are aware of what we want to do. And hopefully that will, you know, alleviate a little bit of these concerns. And then our code enforcement hero is going to enforce a little bit of the rest. But we're, you know, we're trying. It's one step at a time. And I think I put out the list of items that we're dealing with because I wanted you all to know that there's, you know, there's been a lot of issues and we can only do, you know, one, one thing at a time. And we're trying hard to make that better. Hopefully, the list will be showing.
You finished?
I'm done.
Well, I would just like to applaud the fact that the code enforcement has been negligent for numbers of years. And you have inherited some real problems as well as the fact that our codes have not all been codified. As everyone on staff knows, because of various instances and it's a really a puzzle. And that you are attacking that, that people have long been negligent. And that we have people who are here interested in seeing that our community is approved. We do have some codes out there that would be helpful, that you can resurrect those if you need to ask them. Thank you.
Sure, my pleasure.
Anyone else? Okay. Who else on staff? No, please.
I'm just looking right where you are.
I'm just looking, I'm walking here and I have a contractor by the owners at some point that was considered interns audit, where they take our receipts and disbursements, the hundreds of them, and they review them. A full audit will probably take place by January, that's still hoping. Let's get this over.
Thank you. That's it?
That's it.
You just save it up for one or two times a year, right?
Yes, sir.
Right? Ms. Odom?
I haven't got anything, but Chief McLean, Mary did send me the stats if you want to all those. Do you have anything else?
Give out Bill Nye.
Okay.
Very good. Chief, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Before we go to Andrew, I just want to get something clear. Ma'am, you've been sitting here all night. Were you wanting to speak sometime tonight?
No, I was, I had mentioned to the developer at the last meeting, a suggestion for the dog park.
Okay, I'll tell you what, I know you probably want to speak to that, and I know you've sat here all night. So when we get done with Andrew, before we adjourn, if you would like to get up and talk to us a little bit, I'll walk him out, okay? I'll walk him out. Okay, Andrew, anything for us?
No, council, I have nothing tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Ma'am, if you'd like to come up and address council, please do. We need your name, name and address.
My name is Linda McCone. I live at 12440 North Handy Terrace in Dunellen. That's in Citrus County. One of the areas that I thought might be appropriate and ideal for a dog park, however, is in Citrus County at the CR 39, end of the Margaret Carr Trail. There's a corner there that I think would be ideal for a dog park, but I don't know if you had an opportunity to look at that. That's okay. So, so I went and took some pictures myself, and when I, at the next meeting, I will become, I will come prepared with the pictures. However, one of, someone did say that there may be an issue because that area of the park is in Citrus County, and also, I can't remember the land... I will come prepared the next time I come and talk about, because that area of land I heard has a cooperative arrangement with the city of Dunellen, that corner of the, that, the Greenway, Florida Greenway. So I heard that the city of Dunellen may have some sort of agreement with the Florida Greenway as to how that property is used. I'm not sure. So it can wait. We waited this long.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I appreciate it.
I will say to you as you leave the podium, both Troy, our Public Works Director, and Georgiana, our community development, are very much looking into an area for a dog park. That is something, actually, when you came and spoke to us a few months ago, it did take root, and we are still looking at where that could be. So it is alive and well, it's just a matter of finding the right place.
Okay, great.
We'll keep after it.
I will. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations, council. It looks like we have concluded our business. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Slow move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.